I'm not getting any. Maybe Larry just had to use his computer. Let's do the weekend. We can finish some more of our speed study. It would make me feel so much better.
You could go late.
Oh, oh, I can't. It's like a divider.
It'd be a divider too. I could do this.
Yeah, no, but it was.
You're up.
I forgot you did that one. Actually, I have another one to bring. More night. Has a little more real estate. Same. I can do two pages. How much is that little?
Welcome to February 25th. Special joint study session. The Capitol City Council and Successor Agency. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Botor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Germany.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Here. Thank you. Report in closed session. Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, the council met in closed session beginning at 5:30 this afternoon. Discussed in closed session with the city manager, Larry Laurent, the assistant to the city manager, as well as Allison Hayek, who represents the city in the negotiations with the labor organizations. The city council gave direction to the negotiators and took no reportable action.
Thank you. This is time for a public comment. If anyone would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, please step forward. Thank you. There doesn't seem to be anyone to speak. Comments from city treasurers not here? Steph, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I do want to point out the fact that today is our finance director's last day in the office. In fact, we are counting down the minutes, I believe, until Tori leaves us.
Is there a cake? Is there a cake? Nobody brought cake?
There is no cake, but I do hope you can make up for it with some really difficult, tricky questions for her tonight, just to keep her under her toes. In addition, I did want to introduce you to Tony Sandu, who is going to be our interim finance director. He comes to us just after having served the town of Los Altos Hills as interim and previously serving long careers over the hill, including working for Palo Alto, as well as the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority. So I'm really looking forward to working with Tony and having him help us steer through this period of transition and prepare, help us really guide the preparation of next year's budget.
Y'all stand up, please, for Pledge of Allegiance. Tony can lead us in the pledge of allegiance this year.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comments from council, please. Michael?
Josh?
Also, the most fantastic water purification plan, Santa Clara. That was truly amazing.
Thank you. Pull your mic to you.
Well, you all heard me.
Tomorrow.
It's not being recorded, so.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is recorded. You're on TV right now.
Okay. I didn't think I was speaking to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Norton, we have an introduction as well. Another introduction.
Okay.
Another Mark Sullivan.
Yes, this evening, I'd like to introduce Mark Sullivan.
Okay.
He's the Finance Department's new senior accountant. He started with us about a month ago, although he had a vacation in the interim. He comes to us from Santa Cruz Harbor, where he worked five years, as well as working for McGilloway and Ray, a CPA firm, for three years. He has his degree from UCSE in business management with a focus on economics.
Nice to meet you, Mark. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have one announcement to make from council, that is, tomorrow, the Selva Beach Trestle will get its groundbreaking. They just finished building a fabulous structure, La Selva Beach, 10:30 tomorrow. Anyone wants to come see it and get ribbon cutting, great, please show up.
I have one.
Stephanie?
The museum is working on a new exhibit, and they are going to have a soft opening this Saturday for volunteers. So if any of you that have thought about volunteering at the museum a couple hours a month, come on down Saturday from 10 to 12 for a special tour of it. And then, and contact the museum anytime if you'd like to consider being a volunteer. And then, the actual show will open on the March 20, Saturday, March 21st. So put it on your calendar, bring your guests. We always have a cake from Gail's as usual, and it'll be a great exhibit.
We moved the consent calendar in the quarterly financial report, second quarter budget report, and first quarter sales tax report. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull this item from the agenda? Being none, is there any member of the council that would like to pull this item from the agenda? Do we have a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
We got a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move to general government public hearings, receive mid-year 2014, 2015 fiscal year budget financial report, and consider budget amendments. Tori?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the 1415 budget presentation. The goal of this presentation is to provide you with an opportunity to review the fiscal year activities to date, as well as our projections for year end, and to address any potential changes. The recommended action to come out of this evening is to receive the report, approve the budget adjustments that are attached to the staff report, as well as authorize the following personnel changes: increase a halftime assistant planner position to full-time, and reclassify 50% of a receptionist position to a development services technician to reflect the increased responsibilities. And following this presentation, we'll also review and update the budget principles. I'd also like to note that the city received the CSMFO Excellence in Budgeting Award for the 2014-15 budget for the third consecutive year. So that was nice for the staff of the Finance Department. Just to quickly review some of the key budget deadlines before you, is the budget timelines all the way through June 25th. We have the proposed budget distribution on May 8th, with the first budget hearing scheduled for May 20th. When we're looking at the fiscal year 14 adopted budget, we'll be looking at some of the key changes, which include our property tax revenues. We'll look at those in some charts. What we are seeing is that property tax revenues are increasing by close to 6%. This is primarily due to some changes in assessment values. We'll also take a look at the pay stations. While there isn't that significant of a change, we're able to break out the difference between the new lower lot and the upper lot to see how that performance is doing. Also, we'll look at some of our key expenditures and transfers, our CIPs, reserves, measure O funding plan, and look at how the key adjustments are reflected in the budget. Just to give you a very high overview, operating revenues increased by $290,000. Net operating expenditures remained relatively constant. There were some changes. Personnel services decreased by $79,000, and contract costs increased by $159,000, and we'll go into those a little bit later. Measure O is anticipated to generate more than $1 million, and we're projecting a fiscal year-end fund balance of $649,000. If you recall, at the end of last fiscal year, we ended the year with $1 million, just over $1 million in fund balance. And 475 of that was allocated as part of the fiscal year 14-15 adopted budget. There was still a residual piece that council was considering adjusting at this mid-year. However, staff is recommending that that additional piece be delayed until we have the proposed budget hearings. During the year, we had an additional $50,000 attributed to McGregor Skate Park, and during the CIP hearings, council committed $75,000 to additional ADA projects. Where we were originally thinking we'd close the year with a $616,000 fund balance, we're not far off. We're estimating that we'll close the year with a $649,000 fund balance. Looking at revenues by category, the largest category where we see an increase is property taxes. When combined with the property taxes, and property taxes in lieu of motor vehicles, they're responsible for close to $90,000 of that increase, and that's an increase of stable revenues that it's not as volatile as we may see in sales tax or TOT tax. We also have a $40,000 residual RDA distribution included in that amount. Additional changes, intergovernmental, that additional $66,000 revenue is primarily the result of a Safe Routes to School grant that was carried forward. And the charges for services is a combination of increased parking revenues, as well as some additional interdepartment billings related to community development planning Property taxes, just at a quick glance, we reviewed these with the Auditor Controller's Office, just to make sure that what we're seeing is correct. But we are going up close to $90,000. They're saying that they see property tax revenues increased by about 7% throughout the county, or on average, 7%. And we're seeing, you know, close to 6.5% in our revenues. While that will flatten at some point, right now, we're on an upward trend because of the revaluations of assessments. Parking, to get a feel for parking right now, the Beach and Village year-to-date has brought in $24,000. What might be characterized as $24,500 in additional revenues. However, our total parking revenues increased by $14,100. So while we're seeing that particular lot increasing some of our costs, we're seeing maybe some downward trends. Part of the change in the variation could be due to just different receding patterns at this point in year. When we're looking at year end, we'll get a better picture, because we'll be waiting for the full fiscal year end to close. And expenditures, personnel is down by $79,000. That change is primarily from some salary savings, close to $60,000 in salary savings that is being transferred to contract services to fund the interim finance director, as well as the interim chief building official and providing additional contract services in that area. Other changes include, we've seen the Safe Routes to School grant. The $40,000 of the related expenditures are also included in that amount, as well as some cost for increased water utility fees, and some additional costs associated with just general maintenance and due to a new governmental accounting standards. We're going to have to have some additional actuarial or audit reports produced at this year end. Looking at department, not that much change within any of the departments. There is still some savings in finance, and, you know, some increased cost in public works, as we talked about, increased contract costs, and also, community development, that does include some of the additional cost for the proposed change in the assistant planner position. The $75,000 in transfers represent the ADA project. You've seen this chart a number of times, just to reiterate that we're continuing to fund our measure O commitment. 100% of measure O revenues are going towards the ballot's initial stated priorities. Just looking at our reserve funding, we're funding them one year early, as well as being able to contribute a larger portion to CIP in fiscal year 15-16, and 15-16 and 16-17. Our reserves are on track. At the end of this fiscal year, we're projecting that our contingency will have 1.8 million, and our emergency, 1 million. And this is one year earlier than the initially projected measure O funding, primarily because due to additional contributions from the general fund. Internal service funds, this is just an update. As you recall, in fiscal year 12-13, we had borrowed some funds from the Equipment Replacement Fund, as well as the Information Technology Fund. We're still looking at not replenishing them to the value that they were. However, there is still sufficient funding in there for a balance. It's just, do we want to bring them up to that higher level as some of the potential adjustments that you may consider in the proposed budget? In the attached budget adjustment, the equipment fund, there is a change for the purchase of a police motorcycle, along with a related reimbursement. The Capitula Housing Successor has an adjustment, and it's primarily related to our revenue receding streams, as well as, in the initial budget, we projected that we would be using 100% of our RPT-TTF revenues to fund expenditures. However, we're seeing that as we're unwinding, we're not necessarily needing to use all those amounts. So those will result in additional distribution to the taxing entities. The changes in CIP are a $75,000 ADA project, as well as carryforward of specific project revenues and expenditures into the next fiscal year. For considerations, you know, there's a lot of fiscal uncertainties, economic conditions. We're seeing a slight decrease in TOT, not significant, but year-to-date, about $11,000. But that could be something that we might want to watch in the next few quarters. We have the PERS rate changes due to the new policy, pooling policies. How is that going to be handled? And allocation of fund balance, as during the proposed budget hearings, developed strategies, CIPs, reserves, other post-employment benefits. We've been 100% funding the OPEB Trust Fund, if there's more funds to allocate to the Facility Reserve Fund, as well as if we're going to do anything with PERS. We'll also be reviewing some of the suggestions, or taking input from the Finance Advisory Committee on the March 17th FAC meeting. And these recommendations will be presented at the budget study session. Questions?
Thank you, Tori. Excellent report, as usual. Questions, Tori? Sure.
This may be a question for the city manager. I noticed a marked increase in our workers' compensation fund. What is our rate right now? What is the condition of our, you know, unclosed claims, pending claims? It seems like we're really fat in that particular area.
Councilmember Germany, members of the council. I don't have a lot of details at the tip of my fingers about the work comp fund. I know that we've been doing better in work comp than we have been previously. The work comp rates have been doing better through Ambeja, who is how we get, we provide work comp insurance through a joint powers authority with 10 other cities. And the group as a whole has been doing a really good job on work comp. Our liability costs, as a 10-city agency, have been going up on our liability insurance side. Where previously, we used to have work comp problems, now we're having liability problems, and the work comp situation is getting better. We do have a number of pending work comp claims and issues that we're going to need to be working through, but I can certainly look into the balance in the work comp fund and see exactly what that's attributable and get back to council.
That'd be good. Also, and this could be for Tori, if we were to maintain contract services for both the finance director and the additional building official through the end of this fiscal year, would that save us money with relation to our budget for the remaining of this year? Would it cost us money?
Speaking from the finance end, depending on the number of days, it could break even. It would involve just a transfer from the salary line, possibly, to the contract services line, and you might be more familiar with the building needs.
The retired building officials are more expensive than the building inspector. So we definitely are having a budget hit the longer we go using the contract building inspectors. Finance director, since it's a like-for-like position, is a little bit closer. Probably, if we're able to work out about a 30-hour-a-week schedule, we can be pretty darned close on the finance director side. But the building inspector contract is quite expensive.
But they're very entertaining.
They're very entertaining. They're very skilled.
They're a real pair. They're a perfect pair.
A lot of good resources, good services for the city.
Tremendous resources. Questions?
Not a question, just a general comment. I would love for us, at some point, to look into insurance companies. It still bothers me that we're paying the insurance company that we had to sue to get coverage. So if there's ever any opportunities to change companies in the future, I think we should look at that.
Yeah, I will bring.
That's just, you know, that doesn't sit well with most people. They say, you know, and you're still paying them, you still have the same company? Yes, we do.
For what it's worth, when it came time to renew through Ambeja, our sort of group policy that we get through that program, the vote was nine to one, and I was the sole vote asking for an RFP and asking us to go back and look out. And we can, obviously, secure property insurance through other vehicles. Unfortunately, that PEPET program is the largest insurance, public insurance policy like in the world, and unfortunately, everything I've been led to believe is that our premiums would be significantly higher. So I know that's frustrating, and I feel the frustration as well, and I have been carrying that message.
Thank you.
Are we required to be with them for workers' comp as well as liability, or can we take our workers' comp to the public market?
So, in fact, it's an interesting question. We are together, we can withdraw, and in fact, I will be bringing a JPA amendment to your council in the next couple meetings to actually change the JPA language to allow members of the JPA to forcibly remove a member. But there is language already about voluntary termination. The issue with voluntary termination is you have to sort of settle out the accounts, and it can be kind of expensive to do that. But I think getting after maybe your question is, is that the JPA has not issued an RFP for work comp, third-party TPA, work comp services in a long time, and we are actually out today with an RFP for work comp services. So we're bidding that out right now.
Is there a different JPA than liability?
No, it's one JPA.
That's what I was saying, if you're in for liability, do you have to, must you be in for workers' comp as well?
You know, I believe that we could step out if that was our desire. I don't think it would make a ton of sense. I think there's a value at a city our size pooling the risk. Otherwise, we would see some potential spikes in there that may be undesirable. If it's a serious conversation, we can talk about it. I don't think Ambeja would try to hold us unnecessarily. The bigger issue would come down to paying out the debts, basically the bill to step away entirely.
I understand. I understand. Do we have that many open claims right now? That it would be?
There are a fair number of open claims. The bigger issue was, is that on the work comp side, the JPA was low in funds probably eight or nine years ago, and secured alone, actually, your previous city manager was instrumental in this, and it's quite an interesting loan, because I think it's currently sitting at half a percent higher than the LIBOR, which is currently set at like 0.2%. So the JPA is sitting on a $6 million loan that we're paying 0.7% interest on it right now. So nobody in the JPA is particularly eager to pay it back anytime soon, because essentially, it's free money. But that would be the biggest impediment to stepping away on the work comp side, less so the open claims, more so this debt.
Okay, thank you.
One observation here is that we're showing sales tax is really flatlining in 2015, but just in a personal observation, we're at the highest employment rate that we've seen in this county in eight years. And also, has anybody noticed how many new cars are driving around this community? Yeah, there's a lot of cars being sold now, whether they're buying at our car dealer or not, but there are a lot of cars. So it gives a feeling out there in the economy, and I know that at least my business is reflecting it, that the economy's made a great recovery in the last year. And so, I hope this is just being conservative, and it seems like we may.
Yeah, we only have one data point at this point. We receive another data point in March, so just looking at one quarter, it does include an increase, it's about a 2% increase. However, it's nothing like the levels that we had seen in the past.
The things to keep in mind about sales tax, number one, as Tori pointed out, it's a lagging indicator for us, right? We get paid, we receive sales tax data three months after the quarter closes. The second thing to keep in mind is that Toyota, which is our largest sales taxpayer in the city, has been undergoing a pretty major renovation, and so the last returns we saw from them were the first quarter when they basically torn down and were in sort of pretty major construction. So that, I suspect, was impacting them, which would obviously translate into some impacts for us. And lastly, the point I'll note is, is that obviously, the level of economic activity is quite high. I mean, there's a lot of people around town, I think we all noticed that. But the Capitula Mall, which as a unit is, you know, our second-largest sales taxpayer, has been having challenges and probably isn't enjoying the same level of success that the rest of the city is. So those two factors, I think, probably tamped down a little bit in this first quarter that we returned, that we saw. Hopefully, the Toyota things, they're going to get it done and go gangbusters here in the future.
Spring should be good for us.
Yeah, we hope.
Is there any members of the public that would like to address this issue from the council? Being none, we return for council deliberation. Basically, we need a motion to receive your report.
Motion to receive?
Second.
Motion to second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We move to item nine. Receive the California Public Employees Retirement System annual additional valued reports as of June 30th, 2014. Tori, you going to do that one too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the information that's provided in the actual, attached to the staff report and included in the packet is an annual actuarial report. And what we're seeing is some significant increases in rates. Usually, there are typical changes, like you would see results, changes because of investment losses or gains or unexpected changes in payroll. But one of the leading factors in that's contributing to this increase is a risk pool restructure. And what it has done, it is partially the result of PEPRA, because now the existing plans are closed. We aren't having, but the existing employees contribute to that particular actuarial plan that there isn't new employees coming into that segment. So the one factor is the pool is closed. Another is that the employer contribution is now considered a dollar, part of it is considered a dollar amount rather than a percent. So in the past, we might be charged, say, 12%, and if our payroll was less, we would still pay 12% regardless. But now, we're paying the flat dollar amount, just like a debt service payment. It stays the same. It doesn't change in relation to our payroll dollars. So historically, PERS has estimated our payroll, and sometimes that has caused our payroll rate to be listed, but for PERS not to recapture everything from the organization if the organization's payroll was actually less, so that they decided to make it a flat payment. An allocation of the pool's unfunded liability to individual plans based on the liability rather than the payroll. Before, the liability was allocated as a percentage of payroll across organizations that were participating in the pool. Now it's based on our liability. And because Capitola has a high retiree ratio to active employees, we're seeing a larger increase after that allocation has taken place. And this is fairly common in smaller organizations. It's prevalent in Pacific Grove, as well as Scotts Valley. They're also impacted with similar rate changes. In the existing employee agreements, the employee agreements are stated where the employee will pick up any cost of the increase. And what we're seeing is, right now, in fiscal year 1415, the employer's paying the 16.488% and the employee in a miscellaneous plan is paying 10.292. Well, in 1516, if the city's cap remains the same, that same employee will be increasing their PERS contribution by six point, close to 6.7%. And typically, we don't see increases of that range. Usually, they might have been 1%, somewhere in the half a percent range. And now, when we look at safety, we're saying the same thing. The employer's share is capped at 28.291%. And existing is 11.874 that employee is contributing. And now, if the employee agreements are still in the same agreement, it would be 17.314% for a change of five, over 5%. And these would be something that the employees would have to assume. The City of Capitola also has a second classic tier, and this is part of a negotiated contract where these employees who would normally come into a classic plan are picking up an additional 5%. So what that would mean is a classic employee, a miscellaneous employee, could be picking up as much as 21%. And a classic safety employee, as much as, you know, a little over 22%. And that would be for their first five years of employment with the city. Questions?
Questions, yeah. Is there any members of the public that would like to address this on this issue? Being none, I'm returning to council for, we should need a motion to receive the item 9B, which is receive the California Public Employees Retirement System valuation report.
Motion to receive the report?
Second.
Motion second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move to item 9C. Review of the prior year's budget principles and determination for budget principles for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. Tori?
I'm actually going to pick this one up for you. So thank you, Tori. So the budget principles have been something that we've been doing for a number of years now, and I think council is well aware of sort of the process that we go through in the development of our budget. And really, this budget principles is the first opportunity for the council to provide feedback about the kinds of things they really would like to see focused on in next year's budget. So what we'll do tonight is identify those particular goals, programs, high-level policies that the council would like to see. Staff will take those into account as we develop the draft budget over the next several months. And then, when the council reviews it, we will identify how the budget principles were incorporated in the specific programs or projects, how they were incorporated into the budget. And then, we go through the budget hearings, adopt a budget, and ultimately, they manifest themselves in the projects and programs that the city completes. In the past, we've broken up our budget principles into fiscal policies, public service policies, and public improvement policies. And these have all been things that people have generally, when we've surveyed the community, have been things that people were generally quite happy with the city. However, I think in public improvements, people have really focused on street repair as being something that they'd like to see. But overall, people rate the quality of our public service and our fiscal policies as quite high. So what we have here is looking at the fiscal policies that we've identified, and what we've tried to do is kind of give just a status report, kind of a report card on them. Obviously, these are the fiscal policies for the entire fiscal year, and we're a little over halfway through right now. I think some of the ones that I'll call attention to would be the fee schedule that is pending. We're wrapping up a staff level, our work with the fee schedule, and we're hoping to be able to bring something forward this, late this winter to the council to consider revising our fee schedule if we can work through some of the details. Obviously, the Capitola Mall economic development has been a high priority for the city for a long time. Staff is continuing to engage with the mall owners, and, you know, I think we held a hearing, council will recall this year, to talk about relocating the transit center. We also, where the council conceptually supported the notion of relocating the transit center, that proposal was also supported by the Metro. Unfortunately, the Capitola Mall pulled out of the project right as we were considering that. So I have a few other brands in the fire. We will continue to work with them, but at the end of the day, the mall has proved a real challenge, I think, for all of us, as well as the mall owners. On the public service principles, there's a number of, I think, really important projects. Obviously, producing timely and accurate financial reports is probably, and maintaining high-quality services to communities of paramount importance. Expanding the city's ability to accept credit cards. Obviously, we've gone through a transition where a lot of our parking now can be paid for by credit card. We're looking in the near term at transitioning so people can pay by app for their phone, for their parking in the city. In addition, we're hoping, and I don't think it's going to be this year, but I'm hoping next year, that recreation will begin to take credit cards for, and do an online registration for our junior guard program, which I think would be a real important step and relieve a lot of stress for a lot of folks. And then, in the public improvement principles, I think there's been a number, this is obviously the list of some of the projects that get very frustrating and get difficult. Completing the Claire's Traffic Becoming Project, that probably is not going to happen this year. That project was delayed, I think, due to the sewer transmission line. I think we're looking at next year. My Public Works Director is nodding at that. The skate park, bike park, dog park at McGregor is pending. We expect to ramp up work here on that project very shortly, have it open before the end of the fiscal year. I think another ongoing effort, which has been interesting, certainly for all of us, I think, has been developing efforts, trying to continue efforts to develop a parking structure to free up Lower Pat Cove for alternative uses. And I gave that an ongoing. I didn't put it down as a pending project. So it's something that we've all been focused on and spent a lot of time talking about. So with that, I'm ready to turn it back over to the council, and I do have a list of these policies that we can work from. It's one of the things we've done in the past. Sometimes, the council has asked, sort of, we can put them up and talk about which ones we want to carry over, or talk about new possibilities for different types of principles for next year. Alternative, if you'd like to work off a different format, I'm more than happy to facilitate that as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I like the list that you gave us. It seems like there are many of them that are completed, well-done, that we could strip out. But it seems like all the rest of them, you know, we haven't really changed our tune on a lot of these things. For me, I think the only thing that I think is missing in view of everything else that's going on is to maintain quality staff and to ensure to the citizens that the highly-qualified staff we have now continues to serve the citizens of Capitola. Other than that, I don't, I have no hot-button items on here. Everything looks wonderful and well-done. So another year for Claire's.
Next year.
Ron Skelton's not getting any younger. Just want to let you know that.
The sewer project's going to be real, very complicated, so I'm not surprised about that at all. That's, you know, we have some real big projects coming up, and anytime you involve any waterways and creeks and things like that, they get, they get really interesting. I noticed the traffic lines on a couple of streets today. See, we put those out there just for traffic, collect numbers. There's one on 42nd, there's one on-
One on Bay.
Bay, couple around, maybe. Sort of, it's a lot off the topic a little bit, but it was just on the top of my head that I just saw this day and thought I'd ask.
That's actually a project Caltrans does monitoring on certain roads throughout all the jurisdictions at one time, and so they're out there. I think they're going to be out there for three days. We ended up getting the data, so-
Just annual data that they collect?
Yes.
No projects?
No project.
Okay, I was wondering.
Just collecting traffic data for modeling, probably more than anything.
Okay.
I have one project on my list. I'd like to talk and consider a bathroom in Monterey Park.
Is, Mr. Mayor, is this the time to talk about projects? Are we going to have our mid-year budget review where we talk about projects? That's what I thought.
Well, it would be time, if you want to bring it forward to staff and you would like them to include that in discussion, that would be-
Well, this is budget principles, not projects. That's why I thought it would be doing projects later.
To be clear, this is the mid-year budget report. So this is, we went through, we did the mid-year, the summary on the revenues and expenditures and where we stood, and we made the adjustments on your previous item. And this is, this is the budget principles. And often, council has, while, you know, the primary purpose, I think, is to work at a high level, often the council has identified particular CIP projects that you'd like to see proposed. I wouldn't expect that we would necessarily fund a CIP project in this hearing, but if we hear the kinds of CIP projects you're interested in, when we develop the budget and the CIP, we're giving you the menu of options. Certainly, the projects that are identified at this point would be listed then. Is that helpful?
I'd like to bring in discussion a couple of items. One of them is that we talked last year at budget time about creating a line item for ADA, and actually, for ADA issues identification and remediation. And I think it almost should be in every project we do, that that should be a consideration as a condition or a discussion of how that affects ADA and everything we do. So I would like to see some type of line item brought into the next year's budget that allows us to create a mechanism that allows us to address ADA issues in the community. And I know we do it on a small scale, but I think we need to make it on a regular basis. The Wharf. We need long-term funding for the Wharf, and we need, we need to gain community support for that facility out there. Affordable housing is an issue in every community now. It's really becoming an issue in this community. Is there even any affordable housing left in this community? We should address that, and maybe the time to do that would be with the housing, the housing plan update, the housing element update, but it should be addressed. If not, there may be, we should look at a mechanism for financing affordable housing in this community. The issue with bus service. I know we're going, we have, we have Executive Director coming in tomorrow night, so we'll have a chance to talk to him, but that's an issue that we have not addressed in this community. We have a real lacking in bus service in this community, and we pay more than our fair share for that service, and we're not getting it. Junior Guards. What's happened to us in the last two years is, in essence, all of the training and testing and certifications now is taken over by the City of Santa Cruz. I think we need to bring our junior guards back home. I think we had to find a mechanism to actually allow the testing and the certification to be done in-house or do it within our own program instead of sending it off to City of Santa Cruz. We have a big identity with the junior guards in this community. We've been losing that identity by doing what we're doing right now. That's my little hit list, but-
Well, I just, that's a great list, and then my question is just about process. What are we going to do with these lists? I mean, we all have lists. That's why, you know, are we going to, you're going to make a big giant list and then bring it back to us? That's why, you know, I thought we were going to talk about it at another meeting, and maybe we could continue some of these things. Because we get off track. You know, we have our budget, we have our plan, staff is working on those things. We have to be really, really careful not to throw too many things on that list, because they're up to here. You know, so if we're going to, if we're going to add something, let's do it as a group, not as an individual. And, you know, we talked about this before, then maybe take something off their list, which we all don't want to do. We all don't want to do that. So I just think we need to be really careful. There's so many things we all want to do. So how are we going to decide? You know, are we going to take each one of these?
We could take a lot off that we've completed, that we can, I mean, the dog skate and pump track is coming to completion. That doesn't have to be on this year's list. The library, we've completely funded, and, you know, we still have the ad hoc committee, but that's fine, but that shrinks that down significantly. I had a question about the junior guards. Are we talking about the guard instructors are certified by Santa Cruz?
Our guard instructors are now coming from Santa Cruz. And see, the mechanism to-
Well, they're not coming, they're just being tested.
They're both. They're both being coming from Santa Cruz, and they're being tested in certifications going through the City of Santa Cruz. We don't need to do that. We can do that ourselves.
I'm seeing headwaves.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, termine, so you'll recall that we contract with the City of Santa Cruz for lifeguard services. The City of, the Capitola's junior guard program is ours. They're our employees, they're our hires. All the junior guard instructors are completely owned, managed, and supervised by the City of Capitola. What has changed is that Capitola's program, junior guard program, and forgive me, I'll try to get this relatively quickly, is different from any of the other junior guard programs around the state. I know, we all know that. They're better than anyone else. But in addition, our junior guard program is run out of a recreation program. Every other junior guard program around the state is run through a lifeguard program, and the junior guard instructors are, in fact, lifeguards on the beach. Capitola's has never been that way. We've gotten increased pressure over the years for our instructors who go to the regional competitions to be certified beach lifeguards. We've never had that in the past. So as part of our contract that we negotiated with Santa Cruz, the Santa Cruz lifeguards are offering training to our junior guard instructors. So we are sending our junior guard instructors that we hire, we manage, we staff, they supervise our kids through a training program administered by the City of Santa Cruz lifeguards. It has been a challenging process, and I'm sure councilmember, Mr. Mayor, has heard about that, but that's the situation. So they remain our employees with training provided by the City of Santa Cruz, and that's the current situation.
At the end of that training, they'll be state-certified? Which they haven't been before?
They have to do it every year. It goes every year.
Right. I'm saying, do they have, do they get certification?
They don't actually certify, they become beach lifeguards. It's a technical terminology. I would assume, just like a pool lifeguard, you can be certified by the Red Cross. They don't technically become certified, they become qualified for beach lifeguard.
So is that qualification or that certification of value to those performing the service? Because I'm just thinking back to when we went to shifting our lifeguards over to Santa Cruz lifeguards. Our lifeguards were pretty, not unanimously, but the vast majority were very happy because it gave them a path to bigger and better things in the EMT fields, things like that. Are we offering a service that's valuable to the junior guard instructors that we have now?
Well, we're putting them through a 40-hour training program, and we're paying them to do it, to become certified beach lifeguards. So I would argue, yes, absolutely. Our instructors are getting a higher level of training than they've ever received in the past, and certainly, it's coming at a cost. So, you know, I wasn't necessarily prepared to dig in this deep into one specific nuance, but it is a challenge, and it has involved coordination with Santa Cruz Fire, Santa Cruz lifeguards, our recreation program, and a lot of moving pieces, and people have had to bend, and it's made some people uncomfortable. And so we're still trying, we're trying to work out the kinks, and we're hoping that this is going to be a sustainable, long-term solution.
And I wasn't arguing against the mayor's- And I wasn't arguing against the mayor's proposition on this, because I believe that we have a very special junior guard program, beyond all others. I was just trying to be educated. I didn't know this was even happening.
Yeah, and I think we all need to be, what I'm hearing from them is that they feel like they're losing control of the program. They don't care, there's no, the hierarchy's changing because of the way it's run, and it's all, it's being taken over by Santa Cruz. And we've always had this identity and the powers of junior guards in Capitola. I think that we have to look at, that we're maintaining that.
Pay attention to it.
Pay attention to it.
Anyway, to get back to our list, I like Mike's comments. You know, the list is great. That's the list that we've put together before that we all agree on. If we want to add to it, you know, let's have another discussion about that. Let's look at our budget, let's look at the numbers, let's look and see what we can afford. We have this PERS issue, let's wait till after that. We don't know what that is going to cost us. So, I'd say, let's be cautious right now and not put anything else on the list that's really going to cost us anything, or take a lot of staff time unless you want to shift priorities. But what we've got now, you know, we've got stuff going. We don't really have room, I don't think, for too many other projects, I don't think, right now. You know, let's wait three, four, five months, see where they are, what we have room on our plate for, and let's do something else. I mean, I would, to me, a really high priority is the bathrooms at the Wharf. Those should be a priority for everybody. They are embarrassing. They're unprofessional, and, you know, when you take people out there, use the bathrooms, that's our public bathroom on the Wharf? You know, I've looked at both men's and the women's. And so, you know, if we have any extra money sitting around, I know it's going to be expensive to do that, it's part of a bigger project, but if we could do anything, if we had any extra money right now to spend and do anything, I'd go in there, and I'd paint it, and I'd put in new toilets and put in new sinks, and at least just buff it up for now, because it's terrible right now. Go in there, go in there. They're really, you know, for a couple thousand dollars, you know, if we could get in there and paint, put new fixtures in there, it would make a big difference. So, that's where I'd put a little money.
Okay. I would, in bringing these things up for discussion, I just think that, obviously, it takes a majority of the council and staff to agree to these items, but they're items that I think that in the next budget session, that should be looked at, that's all. And I don't know if there's a time or a mechanism for us to talk to you before the time that we start into budget session, is there?
Another meeting.
Mid-year.
Added to the agenda items, another meeting.
This is the intent, yeah, this is the opportunity, before we start preparing the budget, to provide that level of input. Obviously, the budget's not going to be done in the next two weeks. So, if the council would like to continue the conversation to the next meeting, do keep in mind that we have multiple budget hearings planned around the draft budget. So, the question really, at this point, is, you know, the kind of high-level principles that you'd like to see as a council, as a body, us to consider as we develop the budget. So, it isn't individual requests by people. When we do traditionally what we've done, just, you know, in past years, if it's any guide, people will call out usually CIP-type projects, and then, as the public works director develops the CIP budget, he does some work costing them out, and then, we come up and say, okay, you know, we're proposing a $900,000 CIP next year, and there's these six or seven projects you may wish to consider. So, it gives a little bit of a heads-up for staff to kind of do some of the background legwork so that as we get into the adoption hearings, we're prepared to address the kind of projects the council wants to see.
Why don't we do a half-session of regular council meeting and allow an hour, hour-and-a-half in time before we start the budget session to discuss these type of issues? So, you'll have some direction or some...
The only challenge is that I know that our next meeting, the last time I looked at it, I think there was like eight items on general government, so we were stripping things out and pushing them back. My only concern is that without a special meeting, I don't know in the next month that I'm going to have a lot of time that we can put on an agenda for a continued conversation. So, it may just need to be a special meeting, I think. You know, the second meeting in March is a possibility, but I have a feeling we're going to be pulling things off of this first meeting in March just to give us a little bit of room. And by the end of March, we're pretty far into budget prep, and I think I'd like to have the feedback. So, I think we'd be probably talking about a special meeting in March.
Is there interest to the council to have a special session on this issue?
Why not see the first pass at the budget and see what we want to carve out for anything that we haven't thought of? I'd like to see what the budget looks like before I allocate, you know, and not to say that we wouldn't, but that would be a great time for us to look at it and go, you know, here's $50,000, let's do a bathroom at Monterey, or, you know, things like that. I don't know. I mean, that's just my gut.
Okay.
Go along with Mike, as a matter of fact, and, you know, that's sort of based on what you said, Steph. May I add a few things? Okay.
Sure.
So, on the fiscal policy principles, we have support economic development. In the past, we had an economic development committee that we did with the chamber, and it's also been an item called out in the general plan. So, I'd like to add that we reestablished the economic development committee, and some of these things that are ongoing right now could be a part of the items in that discussion when the economic development committee meets.
That group doesn't meet anymore?
Does not.
Oh, okay.
And, so, as we know, the mayor has appointed a committee of people to come up with a public outreach process in regards to the proposal to redo City Hall and the parking structure and the potential park next door. That's going to come up with an outreach process to engage with the public on an issue, an issue that's very important. We need to resolve this in a way that includes the citizens as they would like to be included. I'd like to use that as the starting point to come up with a template that would be used for other issues, other issues of importance to the city, so that we actually have an established process that we can go to, not just mailing out cards to people affected 300 feet away from where the project starts. I think that's pretty minimal. But an established process that takes advantage of the new tools that we have in terms of social media, for instance, there's a lot of things available, and I don't know what the committee's coming up with. So, my proposal is that under maintain a transparent and efficient, accessible government, that we examine for the city, or make, come up with a proposed way to move forward that would engage with the public.
You say Monarch Cove?
Monarch Cove is another one of them. I could think of a lot of them. Okay. So, one of my considerations is, if the city doesn't jump in to manage the outreach process, it could get pretty messy. Also, if the city doesn't jump in in a way that is inclusive, a lot of people are going to feel left out. And a lot of people aren't going to get a chance to say what they feel on issues, and so, they're not going to be able to contribute. So, I think this is something we need, is a blueprint, something that we go to when there's big issues.
You're going to see a presentation at the next council meeting.
Good. And so, what I'm saying is, that could be the start of a discussion, so we can have an actual blueprint in our city codes that we go to. This could be reviewed periodically, but it's something that we use for big issues.
Okay, discussion item, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this on this issue? Please step forward. Being none, back to council for deliberation. Just as a review, separate review of the prior year's budget principles. And if someone would like to give direction to staff at this time, then we could take that.
I would like to move that we direct staff to clean up last year's list, to take off the things that we have accomplished, and to bring that list back in conjunction with the first draft of the budget at the first budget hearing, so that we can refer to it, add to it, take things away according to what the budget looks like. Too confusing a direction or motion?
Second.
I'd like to add one thing, if we could, is ask the public works director to look at the Wharf bathroom and see if there's possibility with minimal amount of funds to clean that up, just a small item.
Thank you.
As a point of clarification on the motion, what about the items that we called out here this evening? Should we build those in?
Yes.
Yeah.
With your word.
I mean, it's not like there's a line item in the budget on them, but just consideration.
Yeah.
Something to talk about.
You know...
Did you include my quality staff comment?
I did.
Because you're one of them. Just wanted to mention that.
Look at that, number one on the list.
Yeah.
As it should be. Helps to be first.
Wonderful, wonderful. In spite of those, just run away.
We have motion and second with clarification on that motion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this leads us to tomorrow evening, 7 o'clock, same place, 7 o'clock tomorrow night.
No closed session tomorrow night?
No.
So, you're out for dinner?
I did see the 5:30. I even circled it, I just couldn't see.
You know what, I did the same thing, Stephanie. I had to call Mike and get it because it's down below.
We could talk for another two hours if you're, I don't want to disappoint the people at the table, all right?